Me too.
Good, I'll just follow your lead. I didn't have time to make notes, I was listening in.
We're live. Hello, everyone, we are live, thanks for coming and welcome to our next episode of Out School Collaboration. There was a town hall meeting, I guess is what they're calling them, on the 23rd, I believe. And so, we decided to do another recap on some of what we found out. And the last time it seemed to be pretty popular, we had, I don't know, about 150 views. So I think, I think people enjoy that we're kind of recapping them. I'd like to say we make them quicker, but I think we talk about it and then give our opinion, so I don't know that they're much quicker. But hey, it's more fun to hang out with us. Okay, so, hey guys, could you tell everybody who you are? And then we'll say hello in the chat box. Rebecca, I think you were first today.
Okay, sure. Hi, I'm teacher Rebecca F. I teach in Out School and VIP Kid. And I teach mostly science experiments and math on Out School for kindergarten age.
Great, Kelly?
Okay, so I'm Kelly and my YouTube channel is Teacher Kelly Tag. I also have a Facebook group called Free and Discounted Classes for teachers to give discounts and parents to benefit from the discounts. Um, yeah, I have, I work for VIP Kid and Out School. In the fall, mostly teaching book classes, book discussion classes.
Oh, good. And it looks like Casey is logging in here now while she's getting ready to come in. I'm gonna say hello to, hey, Evelyn's here. Evelyn, I miss you, how are you? And Stephanie, Stephanie, long time no see, we were just in a media meetup together. And we broke out into breakout sessions and Stephanie and I ended up in the same one, so that was really neat. And Ray, wait, Ray Dene Design, didn't she tell us last time her name was Tori or is that somebody else? Ray Dene, or is it Ray? Ray, you need to let me know what I'm going, what we should call you. So, and Rebecca's here, great. Hey, Casey. How was breakfast? Oh, you're muted.
Oh, it was good, yeah, it was really yummy. I was trying to eat it fast.
Soon as I'm off here, I think my daughter and I will go get some food.
Nice.
Yeah. So my daughter's here visiting and we're just trying to spend a lot of time together because she's in college. So when she's here, we, we just hang out, we eat a lot. Pretty much it's like, whoa, what do you want to go? She's in college, so. Hey, Jen, she said, hi all, my first time here, excited. Jen, if you have any questions for us? Yeah, put them in the chat box, please. And I think she, she was the one on the other, she, why, I don't have words today. In the other Out School Collaboration, she left a comment and asked when we're doing this. And what do you guys think? I think Saturdays seem to be our, our best time to be able to get together. Yeah, you guys, I think Saturdays at this time, what do you guys think? Okay, I'm trying to keep it at this time. Um, because we have some for Fridays, I don't remember who requested that one, but they haven't been able to make it to the panel. So I think we'll just stick to Saturdays, 11:30 Eastern. Got it, stamped, that's good, okay. Alright, so, any beginning thoughts on the last webinar or town hall meeting that we just saw? What do you guys think?
Sounds like growing, so that's a good thing for all of us.
Yeah, I definitely think it sounded like growing. Everything they talked about was their next steps on how they're going to grow and add and do things.
I always like hearing behind the scenes, because I just constantly teaching, I hear what's going on back in corporate office. What are their goals, what's their mission? And I think it's really fascinating to hear behind the scenes.
Right, Casey, what do you think?
Um, yeah, I think so too, I think it's great to hear about just what's going on. It's nice that they have these and, well, they had one last week and this week, I know they said it might not be weekly, but it's nice that they have them to kind of keep us in the loop, so, yeah.
What is that clicking? Does anyone else hear that or is that just me, I hear it?
I hear it, yeah, I don't know what it is.
That's so weird.
Yeah.
I think someone's got a pencil, can you?
I'm nervous.
Yeah, it's not me, I swear, normally that's my legs going, but nervous, but. Funny. Okay, anyway, um, so yeah, I thought it was great, they talked a lot about funding and, oh, what are the other things in my notes? Why don't I just start and get with my notes instead of trying to remember from the top of my head? So it was like funding and money and upcoming things. Jen, I want to know, how often do they have town hall meetings? In our last meeting, they said monthly, it was supposed to be monthly. But they did one this week because there was some updates that they wanted to give us. And Tori said, thank you for keeping us updated, like Rebecca said, we are so busy teaching, it's hard to keep up. Yeah, I agree. And I'm really glad that we're able to do this because if you try to go back and find that town hall meeting, it was really hard. I was on live chat with someone talking, trying to get the link, Kelly was, Rebecca ended up finding it and sharing it with us, so.
If you join the Facebook channel called Out School Teacher Hub, it's usually right there. And you can just type in like live chat, they have every Friday live chat with Latonya and they have town meetings on there. So just join the Facebook group, Out School Teacher Hub.
And I had never heard of that until you sent me that link yesterday. And I'm still not approved to join yet, so I don't know.
You have to be a current teacher to join.
Yeah, well, I'm a current teacher without.
Yeah, you are.
Yeah, they haven't approved me yet, you know, when you answer the questions at the beginning?
Yeah.
So I still can't get to the, to the live or to the chats. Luckily, Casey and I did a Zoom. Casey had a great idea, so. Okay, yeah, so keeping you updated, if you can't find the link, just, or somebody can't find it, just tell them to come listen to the recap and, and we'll get it out for you, so. Alright, um, they did talk about the funding again for the $45 million and ways they're going to use it. Did anyone remember or write down some ideas that they had to use it? Everyone's like, notes.
I know.
They talked about the app a lot, getting, getting an app, like the.
Yeah, they mentioned, yeah, that they, they wanted to get the app going, but they have other things that they're working on first. So they have to get more staff coming in to do the app. Because one thing I remember them saying is that every time they make a change to their website, they always have to make a change to the Android and the iPhone app. So that's a lot of changes to do all at once. So they want to work on the app, but it's not top of their list.
Right, yeah, I know he was saying that since there's been the slowdown, they're kind of focusing on trying to like get that up a little bit more to get like, you know, increased students like per class rate. Or we're like, things like that right now, so.
I, Rebecca, I was playing around with the mute just to see where that clicking was coming from. Just ignore me.
No problem.
I saw you look like, why is she muting me? I'm just pecking.
Yeah, I figured it, yeah, we'll find it sometime. If you ever hear my babies cry or giggle, we'll just mute myself.
I love it.
So far, they're happy.
Well, not the crying, I love the giggling though, it's super cute.
Yeah.
Yeah, lots to talk about that. And I might be jumping around here so much because my notes are kind of everywhere. But he wanted to make sure that we understood that the outside funding, they don't want to be totally dependent on that. They're, they're interested in building a sustainable business and growing the community, improving their products. And it says the funding is investors, the investors provide cash for a stake in the business. So right now, they're doing what they call a Series B funding, I don't have all the information on that. But investors are continuing to give money because they believe that Out School is still growing. So good to hear for teachers, I think it's great for parents to hear. They do not want to just rely on the external funding. One of the questions that they received was about teachers and the funding, like, are they gonna keep the 70, 30%? And I thought his answer was pretty good about why they do it, why they take that 30%. He can't guarantee that's always going to be that way, you know, they still have things that they need to pay on too. But I thought it was, I thought he answered that well, you know? Does anyone remember where the money goes to? Kelly has explained it to me 100 times when I was deciding about Out School, so maybe you can take that one.
Yeah, oh, definitely Facebook, I mean, I see their Facebook ads all the time and I see my own classes in there, which is very flattering. And another thing he did say, because a lot of people, I guess, must have asked him like, why are my classes on there? And he said, well, first of all, if you're seeing an ad for your own class, then they're not doing good because obviously you're not gonna buy your own class. But also, he said, they try and get classes that attract the most attention and the most, and then once the person's in there, then they search or they take a class and sign up for another class. So even if your class isn't the one in the Facebook app, just driving traffic there is going to help increase for all the class. So that's what I got.
Yeah, so they used a lot of the money for, for advertising to help us. So although it's like, oh, they're taking 30%, but how much of it is helping you? You know, if you own your own business, trying to advertise for yourself is very, very costly. Anybody else on that?
Well, they said that part of it was going to the ads, the other part is going to the headquarters staff. So we're paying for them to do all the backend work in there too. And people who are working on the website, people who are working on, you know, all this development stuff, we're paying their salaries. And I don't mind doing that because they're doing a lot of work for us.
Yeah, and also even after they take the 30%, we're making great money. I mean, you know, you can pick your own prices, but especially in the summer when things are going great. Like, you're making so much more than we make at VIP Kids, so it's like, we can't even complain, you know? We're making great money from them, so.
Imperatively.
Yeah.
Definitely. They did say that they are slowly implementing changes because they don't want to just, you know, change everything all at once and it'd be so hard for teachers and not consistent for parents and teachers. So I thought that was really good too, it's not gonna be a huge overhaul, but there are going to be some changes coming up. Building the team and product engineering.
Could you come and close the dishwasher, please?
Um, one of the things was building team and product engineering were, you know, priority right now, I think is the way I understood it. A new upcoming thing they want to work on is teacher dashboard and the messaging system, which is, I think they got that from, I think they got that from teachers, from feedback from teachers. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I mean, I personally don't have a problem with the way they're doing emails right now. I, I, I had never had a problem communicating with the parent, I don't know about everybody else, but, yeah.
Um, I just couldn't find it, I didn't have trouble with it, but I think I messaged you or Danny trying to understand and find things, so. Oh, Rebecca, we should just tell them, sometimes in chats, we have little private chats, like, oh, we can hear the babies or we can hear you. So when you see me randomly.
I left my dishwasher open to let it dry and so my one-year-old's trying to take all the glass Pyrex out of it right now. I'm hearing her, I'm like, ah! Trying to my four-year-old, go close it! So, yeah, it's the life of being a mom, right? I'm hearing it's like I'm stuck in my desk.
Like, people probably think I'm cracking up, I'm sitting here smiling and laughing, but we have a little sidebar sometimes, so. Hey, Meredith, welcome to the chat. Did anybody from the chat listen to the Out School? Why do I keep wanting to call it a webinar, the Out School Town Hall Meeting they just had? I'd like to know their thoughts too. Or maybe they're just here to listen to us and, we're supposed to be recapping it, so. What was I gonna ask you? Oh, the, Casey had explained the native app when he was talking about making the app to me. I, there was a part in there where I was going totally the opposite way, I thought they were talking about, well, Casey, what was it? Now I can't even remember now that I'm all thrown off.
Well, he, he just kept talking about native app, native app, native app. And like, I initially thought of the company native, I'm just like, why is he saying native? And then in case he was asking too, like, why is, like, why is he saying native? And I was just like, I think that's just because he's like British, I think he just means the app itself, like that they're, you know, that it's in the works of like creating an app, but it's, yeah, so I just think that's what, what it was about, but yeah. It was a little confusing.
Casey, I'm gonna mute you for a second and see if that's yours. Can you guys hear that in the chat or is it just us? They must be able to hear it too, right? Oh, now I don't hear it again.
Must be Casey, did you just mute her?
I didn't, yeah, I was just going, but it keeps stopping, so. You guys know I'm ADHD, right? I'm having a hard time keeping up here. I don't know what's wrong with me. Oh, so funny. You know, when he was talking about, Out School is just a big marketplace, really. I didn't even think about that, all of this talk about marketplaces and, and things, I didn't think about, we are actually in a marketplace, we are marketing or they are marketing our classes. You know, we're like, it's like a big catalog that parents can go to. I don't know why I found that so interesting, what do you guys think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I love that, I love it, it's like our, yeah, it's like our own class, but they're just marketing for us, which, I just love the freedom after the ESL companies, you know? We have so much more freedom, I like that.
Yeah. Cool, let's see. Jen, Jen agreed, yes. Yeah, I didn't even know it was like a, a marketplace. Alright, so what else? What else did you guys find on this town hall to be interesting? I liked, I liked listening about the stocks and things, eventually they would like to be publicly traded.
Yeah.
I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, that'd be interesting. And then also he was talking about, or one of the questions that came up was about whether there would be gift cards, like, you know, parents, they can like get gift cards for their children to be taking classes. And so that's like a question and he was saying, you know, it's one of like the top things on their list, but he was saying it's like really highly requested. And so they're going to be looking into it in the future, but he said it's not gonna, it's not gonna be happening like tomorrow or anything, that it might take some time, but that, that could be something in the future, so that's pretty cool.
Yeah, I like the idea of gift cards, because I know like my friend who's an Out School teacher doesn't have any kids. And so she has people sign up with her link and they get a free class, and so she gets a free class. She goes, I don't know what to do with this free class, I don't have any kids, and she'd love to gift it to me who has kids and can't. So with the gift card, it'd be nice to kind of pass that along, I like that idea.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, I don't remember who I asked, but I'm like, how can I use this credit that I have? Because I, but, yeah, I don't, I don't have any kid, well, I have kids, they're just too old for this.
Right, because they have to 18, so as soon as you have a 19-year-old, you're like, oops.
I have, I have a cat, she could like sit at the computer and take some classes.
Oh, there are kids who do that right now in their virtual schooling, it's like, forget this first grade, I'm gonna have my dog take this class.
Right, my cat, she loves laying on the keyboard, so I don't think that'd be a problem.
Oh, so cute. So I actually have Casey's notes that she shared with me because I missed the very end of it. The bottom, you have a growing team. You wanna talk about what they were talking, I think we talked a little bit about it, but.
Growing team, yeah, let's see, where was that?
It's the very end of the notes that you sent me, so.
End.
Because they, they grew so fast during the pandemic that they're trying to build these teams is the way I understood. Like support more, more people to handle support.
Right.
More people to get approvals, but for me, knock on wood, approvals have been really quick.
Yeah.
I mean, I know.
Well, when we started back in May or something, it took four days to get our first class sent back to us and go, oh, you need to fix one thing. So it's more days, you've got to.
Yeah.
Sorry, my, now it's like 10 minutes. Yeah, maybe at most a couple hours.
Like five days sometimes.
Yeah, so they've really, really improved.
It takes forever.
Yeah, like, I don't want to ride a class, so you have to.
You would still be.
Yeah, so they're, they're doing great now.
They were both so passionate about that, weren't they, Casey?
Yeah, yeah, I was just listening like, oh, man.
You had to wait forever.
Yeah. Oh my gosh.
Yeah, and lately it's been great, I know some people have been complaining about like, I think they're very content specific, so they need more of an expert in that field to check yours. So I would be patient with that, but if you're doing like letter sounds and things, for me, they, those were pretty quick. Letter sounds, number sense, those kind of things, so.
My last class was an art class and it got published in five minutes.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah.
My letters and numbers classes, I had a mistake on there that I didn't understand, it was, I guess now you have to write out all of the dates and what you're doing on those dates for the ongoing classes and I didn't know it. But it came back quick, they told me to fix that, I put it right in and it was done, like, both things probably took total of 10 minutes for everything, so I was super excited and very pleased. So they are, they're trying to grow the team as far as more support, quicker approvals and getting clarity.
And one thing too is, we were talking about this when we were in the Zoom, Casey, but, so Rebecca and Kelly, maybe you guys know, but we were wondering if this is like about, because they were talking about growth and like, you know, getting to other countries, and I know that they do have students in other countries. Are they, were they talking about like getting teachers from other countries other than, you know, America and like Australia and the UK? Were they talking about growing as far as teachers in other countries too? Do you know?
Not sure.
You're not too sure, yeah, I know.
I'm not too sure, I, I don't remember hearing that part about the teachers growing, but I do know the US is the majority of their students. I don't know what the percentage was, but that's where the majority of the teachers are, majority of the students are. So that's the time zone that people are thinking of. So they want to expand so that it's probably more evenly split with people in Europe. I know they want to expand more to Europe, like Great Britain and, you know, those areas, but then Australia, so we have multiple time zones available.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be cool, definitely.
But I don't know about teachers, that'd be cool if we could expand to other countries for teachers too.
Yeah, for sure, it would be.
I think it sounded more like an internet worry for, versus a teacher from other countries, like they're, the internet and other places just couldn't hold the platform, maybe not, I don't know, that's just what I thought. I didn't get that out of this meeting though.
Right.
So hopefully, I mean, I think that would be pretty neat to, to have more teachers from all around. But then again, you know, they need the students to support it too, we're going to be everywhere.
Yeah, that's true. Because I know they're talking about like supporting different languages, you know, students that have like, that speak different languages, so that would make sense. If a student doesn't speak English, then, I mean, not like, you know, I know there are some Spanish classes, I know like Evelyn does Spanish classes, which is really cool. But, you know, students that like don't speak English or something, to kind of support them a little better that way.
Like maybe more ESL type?
Maybe, in a way.
Like ESL type classes or?
I, you know, I'm not sure, that would be a, that would be a good question for them for, for one of their town halls.
Yeah, we'll have to ask that question there too.
Yeah.
It is a good thing to think about, because right now, Out School is very English-based, all the classes are in English for English speakers or English speakers learning something else as another language. Sometimes you have people coming in wanting to learn English, but it's, it's not as multicultural, it's very English-based. I wonder if in the future they would have like a Russian section and a Chinese section and an English section, I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be cool, if they did.
I'm not sure, I don't see anything moving in the chat, maybe somebody can say hello so we can make sure that.
Let's see.
What's that?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything, any action there lately either.
Maybe there's no action, but we'd like to know that you're still with us, say hello, say hello. There we go, oh, that's you.
It's all of us.
So, so busy listening, they don't have any questions.
I mean, I know there's still people in here. Well, we're here, guys.
We're still here, yeah.
That's funny.
That's good.
Okay, so what can educators do to support Out School? That was one of their topics, and it's in your notes, Casey.
It is, that one is. Yes. So what do you guys think first?
The main thing he stresses is teach your best. You want to retain your own students, so you want to give quality classes to have your kids come back and see you again. Because even if I might teach the exact same subject as Casey, they might like me versus Casey or Casey versus me because of their personalities. I know, they like me best anyway, right? No, 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 I thought they glossed it with Casey because she's an awesome teacher. But you want to, you want to keep your students and then, oh, sad face.
I know, he's laughing, but that should be a sad face. You're so sad face.
Oh, no, sad face, interesting. But yeah, this student retention.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm done.
We both assumed she was talking to our, to us.
Both Casey's, well, I know Casey Oswald, you and I both teach kindergarten age, you do more letters and sounds. Other people do letters and sounds too, so there's competition out there, so you want them to come back for you. Because that topic is out there like everywhere. So you want to give quality classes so they come back to you. There are other people who do what I do out there, and so I want to offer times that I have, I want to offer the class atmosphere that I do and that helps them come back.
Good. Um, one thing they mentioned, and I know this from Casey's notes, is getting noticed. We talked about like how to market yourself and if you deliver a good class and then you have your next up class, next class upcoming with another class, they might take that one and you can keep a consistent, you know, a student coming back. Anybody else?
Good idea.
Yeah, and, well, yeah, like also, I, I like that they give you incentives for bringing in teachers and the incentives for classes because that motivates me to share a link, like I'm in a mom's group, if someone says, oh, I'm thinking about clean or I need something to supplement, I'll drop my link, you know, or someone needs an at-home job. So we just keep, all of us just keep shouting it, more people know about it and we'll all get more bookings.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
And we're all shouting out each other because I know if someone's looking for Spanish, I'm gonna go send them to Evelyn.
Yeah.
I'm not teaching it, but.
Right, that's true. And then he was also talking about like giving them feedback too and like different ideas. And it could be like, you know, maybe for products or if there's something that maybe went wrong or something, if you feel like something didn't go as you thought it would, then just to like let them know so that they have, you know, so they can communicate it back to you. So like everyone's on the same page and everything and, yeah, so just kind of, I thought that was nice that they said that, you know, that they were like listening.
So, does anyone have anything else in their notes that we haven't thought of or we haven't covered yet? I don't have a whole lot, this one wasn't as, well, and like I said, I missed some of the ending, but this one kind of had the same topic where the other one had lots of, you know, lots of little ones, I think, so.
Right, Jim, enough with you said, Casey, I, I like how they said at the end that if you want to change, if you, if you see there's a need, you want to change, tell them why you want to change. I want app because XYZ, I want this because this, this, this. They'll go, oh, I can see how it could be useful to you and other teachers, we can go ahead and put that on our list. If you say, I want an app.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Forget that, so it's good to write down, so if you have any suggestions for Out School, it's good to write down how you would use it in your classroom. It helps them.
I, I was there for that part, I do remember and I thought, oh yeah, that's smart, like, well, why do you need this feature? Yeah.
Definitely, yeah.
They're all saying hi now. Feature. Alright, well, that's what I have, what else, anybody else? This is a pretty.
I think we covered the key points.
Yeah, does anyone have any questions in the chat? Let's see, Jen, I teach.
We got a question.
I teach math and have different ways of looking at things like fractions, but there are hundreds of classes in fractions. Should I give up on that topic? I don't think so. I think maybe try adding another topic to see what people need or want from you, but I think you'll find your tribe. And you don't teach fractions the way the next person teaches fractions. So if there's a lot of people out there teaching fractions, I think you're gonna need, you know, your thumbnail is going to have to be something pretty neat to stand out. I think your classes are just gonna have to be that much better. What do you guys?
And I say try it, you never know until you try it. Don't give up first, okay? Try it and get your through the door, offer some free classes, discount classes, have people take that class and give you advice of how to make it better, what you're doing well. and give you advice of how to make it better, what you're doing well. And then, you know, just go to the masses. And then if it flops, then you can change your niche to something else a little bit differently because you have those followers, they might follow you to a different um, niche. If you do fractions, then you could try something else, but don't give up first. Try first.
And I also think, um, uh, in, along with what you're saying about like having like a good image or, you know, thumbnail. And also like if you put yourself in your thumbnail, not like to be like, oh, it's all about me, but just saying like that actually helps to draw more because they actually could see, oh, this is the teacher. Cool. And then you could like have you and then maybe like some fractions around you or I don't know, just like something kind of cool or fun. And then that way it just kind of makes it like more clickable, like more, oh, yeah, that looks like a great fraction class. And then, um, also as far as like titling goes, you know, just have like a nice catchy title or something.
And a social title, if you want fractions, put the word fractions somewhere in your title.
Yeah, right, for sure.
Casey, can you let them know what you found out about the Canva? For teachers?
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, so for Canva, um, a lot of you might use Canva for teaching on out school. And so, um, there's, if you have an account already, then you can like go in and go to, there's like a way where you go in and then you go to help when you're in Canva. There's like a question mark at the bottom, I think. And so if you go to help and then you can ask them about it and then someone will get back to you after like a few days or something. And then you can actually, he'll tell you like, okay, go to the website and do this. And then so I did it and they were able to merge my account. And, um, so I don't have to pay for it now. So you educators get it for free. So it's cool because they, you didn't lose anything. You know, you just get it, they merge it and then you have all of that. So it's really cool. Um, you, they don't have like the capability to remove the background, but there's like another website that does it for free. So I mean, you know, things like that. But yeah, but it's really cool that you actually can have it for free, um, rather than spending thirteen dollars a month. So yeah, if you, you don't have to like set up a whole separate account and lose all your stuff, they can merge it easily. Um, what you do, like when you're filling out the form on there, is, uh, you, they'll ask you like, you know, if you're teaching whatever. And then so I went and I was like, yeah, and I said that I've been teaching online. And then I showed them a picture of my out school, um, teacher profile, just the top of it, like whatever would fit in the, in the screenshot. And, um, and that worked. So yeah, I sent it over to them and then like the next day, they said, yay, you're approved. Here you go. So yeah, yeah. So it's pretty easy. So I definitely suggest doing it if you love using Canva.
I think that's a great resource because Canva, the free version is great, but if you can get the free pro version with just a few little things missing from it, I mean, that's, that's great. Great tool to market yourself.
Right.
In anything, even if you've not, even if it's not just for teaching. But I know I only use it pretty much for thumbnails. But Casey uses it. You make like, not PowerPoints, but you make slides and stuff from it, right?
Oh yeah, all the time. Like every one of my classes, I have little present, slide presentations. And so, um, so it's nice. Yeah. And it makes the classes more fun. I think the parents really like it. I've gotten good feedback from them on how I have that. So yeah, it's really cool.
Great question, Jen. Anybody else have anything on Canva?
Well, I wanted to just, I mean, I have mixed, agree with what Rebecca said that don't give up on it at first, try and try. But I, the other side of it is I actually look for classes that nobody else is doing so that I have a better chance. So maybe while you're also trying fractions, also try another class made in the math field that you don't see somebody offering to increase your chances too.
Yeah. And Jen, make sure you check out the parent list, like what the parents are requesting. Maybe you'll find another, uh, math topic that you're passionate about too. Um, and she can find that where Kelly.
If there, um, there is a link, maybe I'll, Casey could link it. Uh, yeah, after the class or.
We need to add that because we talk about it every single time.
Yeah, I know.
I just need to make.
Here, let me see. Yeah. I can get it.
So great. So Casey Morrow is gonna look that up for you and we talked about Canva. Any other questions from the chat? We have twelve people here. Hello, everyone.
I think I got it. Let's see.
What, Jan? Ventriloquism? That is awesome. Ooh, I am so not creative. I don't.
I won.
No, I won. I won. Not according to the chat, but look, I didn't even start looking it up. Teacher Tori said, is there a way to know if our messages reach the parents? Some of mine seem to, but others I wonder if they got delivered.
Ah, I did make a video about this. I've got to check your spam. When I first sent it for out school, I'm like, where are the reminders? People are saying that your classes could be sued. I forget as a teacher that things are going to happen, whatever. Everything's got to my spam, my email. So I had to go through and like unspam a lot of the little, um, all the different kinds. And then they all start coming to my inbox, which is nice. So perhaps that parent just has it in their spam folder. So when they get the welcome announcements, anything, it just hides in their spam and they have no idea that's even there. So as a parent, check your spam.
And how can we, how do we get that across to parents? I wonder.
I don't know, because as soon as they enroll, their first enrolling confirmation is an email.
Right.
And then they get the, um, welcome message, welcome to this classroom. That's an email message. Maybe putting your description on your actual out school page. You gotta find something that doesn't go to email first.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Cause everything, all communications after that go to the email.
Right.
Unless they know how to get into the classroom and figure out the tabs as a parent and find the communication, but it's.
I had a hard time all on their page. I think I always end up going to parent stuff and I'm like, wait, how did I get here? So.
I hope they do redo the website, but I don't know if they want to like a whole overhaul to learn everything, but there are, it's a little bit clunky.
A little bit, yeah. And they know that. They know that. They heard us.
They're working on it.
I think it's pretty cool that they heard teachers, they asked for feedback and that's some of the first things they're implementing, at least according to the webinar. So I thought that was pretty cool. Great. Alright guys, we don't have any other questions in the chat. Any last minute things you want to say or talk about before we head out today? No?
I think so.
Neither. Yay, happy Saturday. Oh, I had, I know this VIP kid, but all my classes canceled for tonight. All of my classes. I had one left and it canceled just, um, last night and I was like, woo, just because my daughter is here. And I wanted to take the day off, but I felt guilty because I got those priorities. But now I'm just gonna spend the day with my daughter and not have to worry about classes. I haven't had a Saturday off since January, so.
Wow, nice. Chinese holidays.
So great. Well, thank you, everybody in the chat and thank you, friends. I'll see you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for the happy day, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright.